Are we ready to go?
While we're waiting, hello Lydia, or hello Erica. Everybody's getting the net, yeah.
Hello. Hey, I gotta tell you something. I'm babysitting two of these. I don't know if you can see. So if I jump up and run, it's because there's pee or poop involved.
Oh, no. How old are they?
Yeah, just letting you know. They're very rambunctious.
We're recording now, right?
How old are they, Erica? Okay, we're good, Erica.
They're like 12 weeks probably. I'm not sure. They're babies, just little puppies.
Recording in progress.
If I get up and run away, that's why.
Okay, thank you, Erica.
Like right now.
Oh, no. All right. Well, thank you very much. Let's call the meeting, a special meeting of the council, City of Federal Way, tonight, May 2nd, 2023, 5:00 PM, to order. It's actually about 5:03 PM, so we'll call the meeting to order. And the first meeting on the, the first item on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance. So I think we're going to say the pledge of allegiance on the agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all. So this will be a study session to discuss various code amendments, discussing code amendments with city volunteer boards and commissions. And the person who's going to be reporting is Joanna Idy, our Assistant City Attorney. Thank you very much, Joanna.
Can we excuse Councilmember?
Oh, thank you very much for reminding me.
Dobie, yeah.
So Councilmember Dobie is excused. He's out of town. And we are joined by Erica Norton on Zoom, and our mayor is not joining us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Just one moment. Bear with me for just a second here. Okay, now we're ready. All right. Thank you very much again, Deputy Mayor Honda, Council President Kachmar, and members of the council. My name is Joanna Idy, Assistant City Attorney here at the City of Federal Way, here to present this evening, guiding us through a study session of forthcoming proposed updates to various code chapters relating to the city's boards, commissions, and committees. And hopefully, this will not be too incredibly dry for you. I'll try to keep it light. So I know this, these things are important, but walking through some of these items can get a little, a little dry. So we'll try and keep it at a good steady clip here. Okay, so a quick overview of where we are headed on this little journey this evening is, first, we'll briefly go over the boards, commissions, and committees in general, just a general overview of that. Then our project goals and objectives. Next, we'll dive into an overview of the proposed changes. And then finally, a couple of thoughts on next steps and more time for any questions and input that you might have. And the reason we're doing this study session here tonight is because these are, these are boards and commissions that, of course, are, you know, appointed by the council. But because they involve all of the different subject matter areas, rather than going through committee, we wanted to go through them here with you this evening. So just as a quick overview of what we're talking about. So first, there's two types of commissions. I'll just use commissions as a broad kind of sense. There's statutory commissions and there are council commissions. So statutory commissions are our Civil Service Commission, Disability Board, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or LTAC, our Independent Salary Commission, and the Planning Commission, which is tightly controlled by statute as well. These are created by the legislature and state law, and the authority and scope of these are controlled by state law. So there, there is a little bit of directive that we can provide in the code to them. But of course, you know, the underlying work and scope of these bodies are actually controlled by statute. The city is either obligated to have that commission by law or must follow certain requirements if it opts in by forming that. It can, they can be decision-making bodies, depending on the law. And some can hear appeals of employment-related decisions. For instance, set salaries for elected officials. Of course, our Independent Salary Commission does that, among other things. And others provide more formalized advisory functions, like LTAC. The council commissions are our Arts Commission, Human Services Commission, the CDBG Loan Review Advisory Committee, Youth Commission, Senior Advisory Commission, Diversity Commission, and Parks and Recreation Commission. These bodies are created by council in the code, as the name suggests. The council defines the authority and scope of these bodies in our city code. They advise and provide input to the city council, hopefully in the decision-making projects and among other things. They can help inform that decision-making process of the council for programs or for ordinance or code changes or budgetary items. But the council ultimately is the deciding body. So they provide that input to you all, and then you get to take that information and use that to help inform your decisions. You, the council may also include a list of topics or goals in the code for those bodies to focus on. And the council does set member amounts and may include alternates if they choose. And we also, through the council, may designate specific deliverables. And then that commission may add to that within its scope, as defined by the council in the code. So what is the, why am I here? Why am I here tonight? The project goals and objectives of going over all of these items within the code is actually, you know, requested by council. We wanted to review all of our code chapters for commissions, committees, and boards to make necessary technical changes for consistency and just generally to promote uniformity throughout the code. This work included reviewing all of the chapters that we have in our code and making other potential changes for updates for accuracy and to reflect current practices. And add, and also to do kind of a general refresh. A lot of these things haven't been touched in quite some time. So to further clarify the intent of the code in these areas to provide clear guidance to the members of the community that serve on these important volunteer advisory bodies. So with that, jumping into the changes in the large packet that you have before you today. So all of the changes are in, were provided in the materials. And all of the strike throughs, of course, are things that are deletions. And all the underlines are, quote, "new language," but in many instances, things are moving around. So we'll talk a little bit about this here. So first, I'll talk a little bit about the general changes, and then we'll go through a little bit more of some of the specific things. And remember, these are technical changes and updates that we're making. So some of this doesn't seem all that exciting, but actually, in application, will be very helpful to provide very clear guidance to our boards and commissions so that they can perform their functions well and they know where to go to find that information. So generally, we worked really hard to consolidate sections, to adjust organization and titles of sections to promote uniformity and add inconsistent language and requirements, including updates to the purpose and goal statements for each commission where those were needed and clarifying commission roles. We also made membership levels up to amounts for flexibility and adjusted those amounts to reflect those current practices and availability. So this is meaning that we can go up to a certain member amount, but we don't have to hit that if we don't have enough members to do so. So that allows the council to basically adjust the number of members on a commission depending upon interest or need or what have you, up to a certain amount. And, and those are reflective of the current amounts that we have or historic amounts that we have had.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
So when I was on the Arts Commission and we were down members because council hadn't appointed anyone for a while. The city attorney we had back then said the quorum was going to be five no matter what because we were supposed to have nine voting members. So we, we didn't have a, a meeting that counted for a couple of months because of that. But, so if you can go up to a certain amount, so then the quorum would change depending on how many appointed members you have?
Yes, that is exactly the changes that we've made within this document here. So what it would mean is that a majority would constitute a quorum. So a majority of appointed voting members. So that would be what would constitute a quorum for purposes of holding a meeting.
Okay.
So if you had seven members, for instance, instead of nine, then you would have four that would constitute a quorum. And there's also been some other adjustments made for how alternates might be able to contribute to establishing a quorum too. And I'll definitely touch on that as we go through.
So one more question. So if
Yeah.
if there's a commission that's had nine voting members and they're down to six because we haven't had the ability to appoint anyone, so then four would be their quorum? Okay.
Yes, that is exactly how that would function. All right. So I will keep checking along here.
If I can just
Of course.
So, so for example, I know that with, with LTAC, that for a while, they didn't have a quorum and weren't able to have a quorum. So, so if it would have been this way then, they would have been able to constitute a quorum.
Right. So essentially, what we're trying to do with some of the changes that we have incorporated within this draft is to allow for greater flexibility so we don't have instances where we're unable to hold a quorum, we're unable to hold a meeting because there isn't a quorum present. Now, I, I can't remember the precise example of LTAC and what the issue was there, whether it was, you know, because it was not hitting a specified number or not. So I don't want to speak out of turn there.
And LTAC is different. It has an additional requirement that they be balanced, both givers and takers or payers and receivers. So that was the issue we had with LTAC.
Okay, all right.
We repeatedly couldn't find a hotel year, I think it was.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
That problem unfortunately persists.
Yes. So the quorum requirements are going to operate in addition to other requirements there might be. LTAC is a little bit of a unique body for that reason. So, and that's because they are a statutory body, right? So, so again, so I'm going to clip through a little bit more of these general changes. And thank you for these questions. These are actually perfect because we are hitting a lot of things that we're going to end up touching on throughout. So just as a note on general organization, so you'll see in the draft, there's a lot of things that look struck out and, and underlined and like they're brand new. A lot of this is consolidation. Because what we have attempted to do with this draft is to promote a general organization, which is on the slide you see before you here. And this is kind of a loose parameters, if you will, guidelines that we try to follow for each of the commissions. So the first section would be the commission name, created, and purpose. Then that would, so that would contain our creation statement and providing general information about the purpose or goal of the commission. Next would be a section on membership and appointment. This is the number of members, any, you know, qualifications for membership, any sort of, you know, very focused on membership and appointment provisions within those sections. Next, the officers, staff and, staff and operations. For however many officers are appointed, the meeting frequency and procedures would be found in that section as well as support staff, and then how meetings are conducted. Would, those provisions would be underneath that section. And then finally, duties and responsibilities. This section describes what the commission must do and expectations and focus of their work. So just wanted to at least put that before you here of like, this is the general, you know, similar organization we tried to follow throughout. Of course, there are exceptions, especially for those commissions that are statutory in nature that have some additional parameters that need to be expressed that aren't within our council-created commissions. So. Some additional general changes. So these are things that were basically incorporated throughout each one of the commissions where it was possible to do so. There's some new language for conflict of interest disclosure. It's not to say that this is a new requirement. It's not. It's just making sure that is expressed in each of the commissions, and it's done so in a uniform way. It was a little spotty before, so now we're making that consistent throughout the code. Also, consistent language for open public meetings and records of proceedings and members serving in a volunteer capacity. So again, making that language consistent throughout the code. Setting minimum meeting amounts at quarterly for these advisory council, sorry, commissions. And this is, this is to allow flexibility. The commissions can certainly meet more frequently than quarterly, but we wanted to set a minimum. And we also didn't want to have a situation where we've, we are saying, oh, this commission must meet monthly. And then having them not meet monthly, that just seems awfully silly. So just creating a little bit more flexibility for commissions and understanding these folks are serving in volunteer capacities. We still value their work. It is important work. But we want them to be able to have flexibility to accommodate schedules as necessary. So new language is incorporated for civility into quorum. Quorums are a majority of members. So a majority of appointed, of appointed voting members, as we just talked about a few minutes ago, not specific numbers, because that does create that problem of, oh, gosh, you know, we don't have that many people that are appointed to this commission. It's getting awfully hard to even hold these meetings because we've got a set number that we have to meet in order to hold a meeting by having to meet that numerical quorum. We're also incorporating language throughout for each of these commissions, allowing alternates to be able to count towards a quorum. But this would require the chair to specify which alternate would serve for the duration of that meeting. So an alternate can serve to create a quorum. So say, for instance, you do have a nine-member commission, and you only have four of your regular voting members show up. That's not a quorum, because a quorum is five. That's the majority for a nine-person commission. But you do have two alternates, and those two people have showed up. So at that point, those alternates can contribute towards establishing a quorum so that a meeting can be held. And then, because there's two alternates, the chair would then doesn't designate which of those two alternates is serving for quorum purposes so that that person can also vote. So there's clarity on the record. So hopefully, that makes sense. Really, what it is intended to do is to make things a lot easier for people to be able to hold a meeting and conduct business. And also, it creates more value in being an alternate member too. So not only do you get to participate in conversations, which they certainly do and can do now, but now it's, okay, well, I can help and kind of be a pinch hitter, if you will, if we need to have someone contribute to a quorum. We also made some consistent language throughout the code for annual work plans and status reports. So status reports can be written or verbal and really would be delivered at the same time as a work plan. And we're saying, status reports, we're talking about like, hey, you know, how are things going? How was, how much did you achieve in the last year? Or what do you see as current issues that you're focused on, or what, what do you see coming on the horizon? So it doesn't have to be really formal, but it can come along with delivery of that work plan. And many of the commissions are already doing precisely this. We're just, again, creating that consistency among the commissions. Okay, so I'm going to jump into the specific changes. So, so all of those items that I just mentioned are all general. So they don't, so they are going to be applying throughout each one of these specific commissions I'm going to talk about. But I'm only on these upcoming slides going to talk about something that may be specific to that particular commission that we've made. So just hold those general changes in your mind. Those are things that are going to apply throughout. And now we're going to talk about, okay, well, what specific changes did you make for the Civil Service Commission, for instance? So, and Deputy Mayor Honda, did I see your light? I'm sorry. You have a blue blouse on, so I can't see your microphone light very well.
So on the work plans, are, are they going to have a consistent format so that they all come to us in one format that is, instead of like, for instance, we had earlier this year, the Diversity Commission work plan. It was really hard to, to make heads and tails out of it because it wasn't very consistent with what we see in other work plans.
So that isn't something that we're specifying in the code because we want to allow for flexibility for changes? If that is something that the council wants to see, that's certainly a direction that council can provide to the commissions. One thing that you might want to think about is, oh, is there a particular format you want people to follow? Maybe provide some examples or something along those lines? Rather than placing something in the code, because that can be really rigid. And anytime we need to, you know,
Okay.
flex and change with changing times. You know, we don't want to be hamstrung by our own code, right? Which, the same thing with like, the number of members and the number of quorums, right? So we don't necessarily want to paint ourselves into a corner, if you will.
Okay. Got it. Thanks.
With that, could we, not as part, part of the ordinance, but just say, hey, this is the recommended format for a work plan, something like that?
If the council wanted to.
Or suggested format for a work plan.
Yeah, if the council wanted to do something like that, the council would certainly be able to do something like that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So for the, the Civil Service Commission. So this is a statutory commission, so there's not a lot of changes to substance that we did here. But we did need to make some updates and corrections just for making sure it adhered to the statute. We did propose the repeal of definitions as they weren't needed. They were pretty unnecessary, honestly. They didn't contribute a lot of value. We did, again, adjust the language for consistency with state law. The statute sets membership at three, but our code has historically set membership at five, which we can do. The statute can set the floor. We can set the ceiling. Council can provide for more members if it wants to. But we do have some flexibility. If we can't hit that five-member number, then that's okay. But we just can't go below three, which actually makes a lot of sense, right? Having a commission of less than three doesn't really, doesn't really work. And then, of course, we made consistent, it changes consistent with the general changes I talked about a moment ago. For the Arts Commission, there's updates to the purpose statement for clarity. And for each, each of the commissions where we've got some updates to the purpose statements, I've included them here in the slides for you. So the new language is listed up here, really to reflect the current practice and also to just make sure there's that clear direction of, you know, you're an advisory body and this is your function, and you report to the council, you're appointed by the council. And that input that you're providing is to the council for the council to make its decisions. So hopefully, that makes a lot of sense when you're reading through that language here. And then we also added language on appointing up to two alternate members to reflect actual practice. Because that's not something that was memorialized in the code previously. So. For the Human Services Commission, we, again, made some updates to the purpose statement. That the commission shall serve in an advisory capacity to the city council and make recommendations on matters, including but not limited to the planning and funding of behavioral health, community services, prevention services, and senior services. And this is really in the same spirit that they've always had, but again, wanting to memorialize that into the purpose and goal statement. We also removed language referencing specific organizations or entities that was in the code to make it more flexible in general. And then finally, those changes that were consistent with the general changes mentioned before. The CDBG Loan Review Advisory Committee, we're actually proposing to repeal that entire chapter. This has not been used. It's obsolete, so it's not necessary. So I'll keep on clipping along here. You're welcome.
Question about that.
Yes.
If it happens again, we can recreate it anytime, and would it take a long time to re?
So if there was a need for us to bring back that committee, we certainly could do that. It wouldn't take very long, but we, honestly, there hasn't been a need. So we've been functioning along just fine with the programs that we have without that committee. It's, it's actually been something that hasn't been touched in years. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. The Human Services Commission does handle a lot of the CDBG recommendations now. So for that reason, we didn't really need to have a separate committee.
I think it was, it was, there was some kind of a loan that we were community, communities could apply for, and we had these, this commission review those applications.
Yes, that is correct. And we, I believe, only did one of those types of loans in the past. And it was a bit bumpy of an experience, I think, for both the city and for the person receiving the loan. And, and because of that, just the city hasn't engaged in that particular function any longer. So hence the reason for removal. All right. So for the Youth Commission, this is going to look like there's a lot of changes here, but it's not as extensive as it seems at first blush. So I, but we will, we will muscle through it. So again, updating the purpose and goals to clarify the scope and role. And really to refresh this for current day. The, the Youth Commission, these seemed a bit dated to us when we were reviewing it. And also, hey, okay, well, how can we make participation in this more meaningful too for the youth that are serving on this commission? So really focusing on the opportunity for youth to engage with and learn about local government, serving as an advisory body to the city council, contributing a youth-focused perspective on policies, code, plans, proposals, and practices, and providing input to the city council, other city boards and commissions, and city staff on youth programs, recreational activities, and other issues of importance to youth. So providing guidance, but also giving them a little bit of latitude to be able to determine some of those new issues that they might want to bring forward as items of concern or interest to the council. And so we also adjusted member amounts here to reflect current practices. And I know that was a recent change to membership levels or membership requirements for the Youth Commission. So these changes are all consistent with those changes that you recently adopted. Clarifying language around diversity of employees, of appointees, making sure, you know, they reflect the community wherever possible, as much as practicable. And language consistent with those previous changes, as I mentioned, and ensuring that our running start kids and homeschool kids are eligible too. Clarifying that no meetings occur outside of the school year. And then adjustments to the duties and responsibilities of the commission to refresh for the present day while still maintaining the intent previously. And here is a list of those refreshed duties and responsibilities. I will not read it to you verbatim. But essentially, it, it's, again, following the same spirit that we had before of wanting to provide advice, wanting to provide recommendations to the council. But, and also being available if, if that would be useful for the council to serve as advisors, providing that youth perspective to the council's boards, commissions, and task forces upon request, of course, and upon availability. And then just, again, focusing on the consultative role of the commission and the commission members. For the Senior Advisory Commission, it was rearranged to improve the flow so consistent with that general organization I showed to you earlier on. And also updating the purpose statement to refresh and clarify the scope and role of the commission. The new language is to advise city council on all matters pertaining to older Americans and their needs, including but not limited to health and nutrition, transportation, housing, employment, and recreational programs. So you'll see kind of juxtaposed with the old language. It's in the same spirit, but again, kind of refreshing it, updating it, and providing a little bit more flexibility while still providing that scope. For the Diversity Commission, the same is true. Updating the purpose and goal statement to refresh it for the present day and clarify the scope and role and reemphasize the purpose and importance of, of diversity and inclusion. So the new language reads, "The purpose of the Diversity Commission is to engage with underrepresented communities to solicit feedback and information that would help identify opportunities to address issues of diversity, promote diversity programs, and provide guidance to the city council to create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government and community." And you can see it's a little bit more of a mission statement, right, than what we had before. What we had before was pretty short. But hopefully, this hasn't added too much to make it too bulky, but still providing that guidance and scope. So still remaining with the Diversity Commission, there was some adjustments to language supporting membership and representation by the range of the diversity spectrum. And also recommending removal of the prioritization of duties and responsibilities to increase flexibility. And this also is making it more consistent with other boards, commissions, and committees. They actually had a prioritization of their duties and responsibilities that they focused on things in, in order of priority, which was odd because that's not something that we had in other places and also isn't very flexible. which was odd because that's not something that we had in other places and also isn't very flexible. So we wanted to remove that.
I have another question.
Of course.
I, I like what I, I see. I, it's, but my question is, did you go to the boards and commissions and talk with them before you changed these things?
So we brought all of these changes to the support staff and to the different directors throughout the city, corresponding to each one of these. Honestly, for each of these, the, the changes are so subtle, right, and, and intended to be more flexible. They weren't necessarily pitched through by each board, commission or committee, but they should be fairly consistent with a lot of the things that have been occurring over the past.
I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So this is another statutory board, our Disability Board. We just made some updates to this to make the code consistent with controlling state statutes and again, the general changes that we mentioned previously. For LTAC, again, necessary updates to make the code consistent with statutes and those general changes mentioned previously as well. Independent Salary Commission is the same, but we also provided some additional detail and statutory references just to help guide folks when they do engage with this particular commission.
Before you go any further?
Yes.
Could you go back to the Disability Board? I didn't know we had one.
Oh, the Disability Board, yes. So actually, what I'll do is I'll hop up to my draft. So the Disability Board is actually a statutory board and this is for law enforcement specifically. So we have a lot of different things that are bodies here that don't get used very frequently, to be completely honest with you. But we do need to have them on the books. Hold on just one moment.
So it's really a disability board for people who have been injured in duty, in line of duty?
Well, and if I could intercede, it's actually for those who are members of Plan One of the law enforcement's left one.
Yeah.
So I don't believe we have a single left one employee.
That's really old.
It's, I don't believe anyone would still be employed that was in left one. So we might have some retired people that were in left one, but it does not really apply to many people.
So why don't we get rid of it then?
Well, we still have to have it until there are no more left one people.
Okay.
Is there, I mean, is there presently a board constituted at all or is there anybody on it even?
It would be as needed.
Okay.
Right. Okay. All right, so now we are at our Parks and Recreation Commission, I believe. Yes, okay. No, I think I skipped over the, the Independent Salary Commission, but that is, again, a statutory commission, providing additional detail and statutory references there. So when they are called, they'll, we'll be able to just kind of off the shelf grab the code chapter to help guide folks through their duties underneath this commission. Okay, and then we have our Parks and Recreation Commission. So the refreshed purpose and goals to clarify the scope and role here. Again, this is in the same spirit as mentioned before. Purpose of the commission is to work with city staff, city staff in an advisory capacity on matters pertaining to parks, open space, natural areas, trails and recreational facilities and programs for the purpose of informing, advising or recommending actions to the city council. And then there's other changes consistent with the general changes. And then finally, Planning Commission. There was a lot of reorganization that happened here. Planning Commission went ahead and had some changes made last year. So there wasn't a ton to do, but we did, again, do that consolidation and organization improvement similar to the other commissions. So, so next steps, receiving your input today, of course, and then we can make any adjustments that might be needed and then we can bring it to future council meeting. And if you have any questions or input you would like to provide, I am more than happy to take that.
Should I go ahead? Okay, so, yeah, thank you, and I think this was really needed and I'm glad we're, we're doing this. You guys can help me, do the numbers mean anything, like point one zero or whatever, point zero one zero? Does that matter if they're the same, consistent or if they're all different?
It doesn't really matter. I mean, so each chapter, so what they mean is, you know, there are different levels throughout the chapter, the discrete chapter that they, hold on just a second, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. There we go. So it doesn't matter if they're synced up chapter to chapter, if that's what you mean. We just tried to keep it organizationally making sense. We didn't want to change a lot of the numbers and repeal a ton of sections because once you get rid of a section, which is what those little numbers correspond to, it can never really be used again. So you want to preserve as many numbers as you can within your code, just for, again, that future flexibility. But they don't have to be like, line for line, exactly the same throughout. We like to have, you know, as much as we can.
That's what I was looking for. Okay, no, I understand. And I know in the, in the write-up, it talks about financial implication that there's going to be none. So my, I do have a question around compensation and I know there are some boards and commissions not here that get some kind of compensation, either gas money or something like that. So is that something we'll consider at some point and would that change the financial implication?
So that's not part of this proposal at all. So if council wants to approach that subject, that is, that's a different discussion.
So it's not, it wouldn't be part of the?
It is not part of this at all.
Okay.
But it does, nothing here precludes that discussion from happening. We could add it.
Okay, and then, so with that, in the youth, I guess, in the same line, then Youth Commission, there's a line that says recommending outstanding youth to council. So that's something that we have not done in the past. So I think that's, we should consider upholding that and making that a, something we, we do in the future. And with the statutory boards, especially LTAC, it'd be great if we could at least talk about who can be on LTAC, receivers versus givers or whatever that word is, so that it's written somewhere.
So that is in state statutes and that also is memorialized in the code itself for LTAC as far as like, having it be balanced between taxing the people who are being taxed and the people who are benefiting from it. And that is within our code and that's also in statute too.
Okay, so the fact that it's not here does not mean anything.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you so much, yes.
And I guess just, it might not be clear, these are just the changes. So.
Get it.
If something is being deleted or added to, then that's here. But we'll, we'll have a document for the next meeting that will show kind of the code as it will be if you take the changes so that you can see it all together. But these are just the changes.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Yeah, with, with the Youth Commission, you had to some part in there that said something about diversity. Are you talking about diversity of the different schools that they go to or diversity of ethnicity? Or what type of diversity are you talking about there?
That it represents a good cross-section of the youth in the community that are of that school age and different schools that they may attend or whatnot. You know, again, similar to a lot of other commissions, it's very dependent on who applies, right? So, so we have, we can do our best to encourage people to apply and to serve on the commissions and be appointed by the council. But we, it, it's really, it's really up to folks applying and then eventually getting appointed. We can't say specifically like, so and so from this group or that group, right?
All right.
So Erica, I don't see you on, do you have any questions? There you are.
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, all right, I have one. Is everybody, was there something to do with parks acquisition that the Parks Commission used to be advisory on that are no longer?
No, they would still be advisory on all of those things. It just is, I think, expressed in a different way now. So it would be on any acquisition or any development of open space or parks or what have you. So the Parks Commission is still going to be advising on those things, but we tried to make the language a little bit more general now, so.
Okay, so in what format do they advise on our parks? Because we haven't actually acquired parks.
Right. So they would provide input on whether or not we do or, or if there was a plan by the Parks and Recreation Department to acquire additional space or something like that. If you'd like, yeah, absolutely. So that would be something that they would have the ability to provide input in on to the council for the council's consideration as it makes its decisions.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd just like to thank you for doing this. I, I am glad to see that our commissions will be more consistent and that they are updated because some of them really did need to be updated. They were beyond, beyond what, what they were used to do and what they're doing now. So thank you very much for doing this, I appreciate it.
Of course, thank you, it was my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, and it looks, it looks like some great improvements.
Thank you, appreciate that. And thanks for sticking through the very dry portion of your evening. So with that.
If, if this was the driest we ever, ever had, I'd be delighted.
Well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. Is there anything else for the good of the agenda? Seeing none, we'll call the meeting closed at, what time is it? It is 5:43 PM. Thank you. We will, we will adjourn to our regular council meeting at 6:30.